It started.
So.
All right. Good morning, everybody. It is 9:00 AM and I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Secretary Ingham, if you could take role.
Yes. Commissioner Obisin?
Present.
Commissioner Beck?
I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner Correa?
Present.
Commissioner Manis?
Here.
Damn it.
Sorry.
Is Commissioner Taylor here yet? Commissioner Gibson, or Vice Chair Gibson?
Here.
Commissioner Klosasilic?
Here.
Secretary Ingham is here. And Chair Burke?
Here.
That's eight, no, yeah.
Eight of us.
Eight of us.
Great, thank you. Okay, that'll take us to item number two, which is discussion of legislative initiatives. And so I'll pass that over to the Legislative Subcommittee.
Hey, Ms. Patty. Legislative Subcommittee.
Okay, so the Legislative Subcommittee met. And there's a number of items that we're looking to put forward. One, the recommendation from the Legislative Subcommittee regarding transportation is that, and I think I brought this up last month, did I not, or no? I'll bring it up again, just in case. So, last legislative session, we were looking to hopefully be able to partner with some other entity to support legislation regarding transportation and to fully fund transportation and also transportation for first year. And we were of the understanding that there was legislation that was going to come forward and never did. So now we discussed it again. And it's highly unlikely that some other entity is going to propose transportation for our first year because school districts aren't opening new elementary schools. So the, our recommendation is that we get someone to sponsor transportation for the first year because it really is, 99.9% of it is a charter issue. There are very few grand elementary schools opening up in the state. So districts aren't feeling that punch. It's like it's not a problem for us, but it is a concern for us. So our recommendation to the full body is to get someone to sponsor legislation that would pay for transportation.
Commissioner Correa?
If, and if a district did open a new elementary school, wouldn't they just basically, yeah, they'd absorb the costs in their transport budget? If they did, because it's probably very minimal compared to some of the things that we're encountering. So to me, the question is, and I know we discussed it, is is this session, upcoming session, a possibility? Because obviously, it's a short one. And, and maybe it is if we get someone who's really on board with us and wants to push it through. We, this is September. That means we've got to get something written and start really pressing, pressing the flesh as soon as possible. I think we should try, even if it's not this session, in preparation.
Conversation is there.
We should forget about NMSBA as support for transportation. They didn't come through last time. They said they were going to, not at all. Let's just, you know, go this on our own. And if they want to, if there's any desire on their part to kind of expand it to make sure that transportation is fully funded for districts and schools all throughout the state, then that's great.
Right.
But we only have ourselves to rely on.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then the second, the second item that we discussed was to see if the commission had an interest in looking at the Charter School Act and that 10% cap for small school districts. School districts that are what, under, is it 1,500? You can't have more than 10% of that. If the commission was interested in looking at getting that taken out of the Charter School.
I would be, absolutely. I mean, I see it as a hard fight, especially from, obviously, small districts. But, you know, those districts could also, if they wanted to be slightly creative, could become chartered districts. But the thing about the way the law is, it's written now, and I'm sure all of us are certainly aware of it. The way it's written now, it's, there's no chance of a small, a rural area getting a really high-quality charter school with the way the law is written.
Right.
So the argument would be, obviously, if we're going to do what's best for kids and families, then the remedy you just spoke of is the best thing.
Right. I don't necessarily think this session, it fits, you know, but I, and I agree, I think it's, it's going to, it's going to be a hard fight. There's going to be a lot of opposition. So finding someone who's interested in even carrying it is going to be the first, I think, hurdle.
I wonder if there's a world in which it's, instead of eliminating it, because I do think it's going to be too, there's too many rural school districts represented by legislators. And so I also wonder if instead of, I, I think it's been difficult to remove it, but I wonder if it's, because I think it, it's flawed in that it's assuming that the only students that are going to attend the charter school are from that particular district. Right? And that's usually not the case. I mean, there's very few districts where students, like it's so, the, the span of it, I mean, I'm thinking Galt McKinley mostly, right? Like where the geography of it would prohibit students from coming from other districts. Like most districts, charter school will come, and there's going to be students from all around the area coming to even a small district, right? Like, which is what I think we kind of were seeing with Lake Collins. Like, is it only going to be Mora? No. I mean, that's, it's unlikely that every student's going to come from Mora. So using Mora's count as the only count
is, you know.
is a little flawed. But I, I, I mean, it's, everything that's being said is correct because we, those students deserve to have a functional, financially viable, quality charter in their area. But like you said, it's like to have 20 kids as your cap or 35 kids as a cap, it's finance, it, it makes it immediately more viable. cool, and which is inappropriate, it's just inappropriate. When it's not actually, it may not actually be causing harm to that particular school district in the way that the law is assuming it would. But, yeah, I, I mean, I totally support it because I do think it's an issue. But I just wonder, yeah, how to go about it.
Commissioner Obin Sheen and Commissioner Beck.
Yeah, I guess the, the question for me would be, how big an issue is it? Right? So are we feeling a ton of pushback from rural communities saying, you know, we don't have a viable educational option for our kids? Or is it just us thinking it's just not a good idea? Because I just, I mean, I guess the idea would be, I wouldn't want to take on this fight if it's just us trying to, you know,
No, there is.
take a fight.
I know with, like, from Lake Collins, it is an issue, right? Like, that they have a viable school idea without the numbers to support it, right? So that's an immediate, like, that's a real issue. But I think there's also, like, what was it, two years ago, we had a school that sent in the NOI and they were disqualified because of that 10%.
Yeah.
Is that two years ago?
Jersey, yeah.
Right, so.
Jersey.
I mean, it is a recent issue where people are trying to apply to open up rural charter schools. And they're not, they're, they're either disqualified because they, they, you know, they're trying to get a viable amount of students or what they think would be, make sense for their school. Or, like Lake Collins, they're abiding by the law and it's going to hinder them as well.
Potentially.
And I just don't know how many people aren't applying.
Right.
That's my question.
But I would say that the, if, if we intend to push that through and maybe contact the representatives from those folks who were denied the ability to even apply, and Collins Lake, to push their legislators to say, hey, this is limiting our ability to provide this option.
Yeah, you know, my, my question is, how many people have just simply not put in an application because they figure we just, you know, as much as we want to do it, we can't be successful with only 35 kids forever, you know? And that's, so, and I don't know how you, I don't know if PCSM has any information in terms of people that have contacted them, expressed interest, and they've then had to show them, this is what it looks like right now. That would be an important piece of information to be able to move forward and say, and you're right, talking to legislators and others in the area to, because you're right. Why spend the time if those areas aren't interested? Then it's like, we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
Um, while, after Tim, we'll go to you. And what I'm wondering, if Lucy, if anyone from PCSM is online? No? Okay. Because I was going to say, we'll just pull them up real quick and see if they have anything, but, okay. Commissioner Beck, then Commissioner Correa.
You, you basically said, what I was going to say for the most part is that, you know, in the three years, I've experienced this twice, the one that got kicked off two years ago. And the Collins Lake situation, which I'm still concerned about from a financial standpoint. And in my three years, the very beginning, when I learned of this rule, because I think I learned of it when it got kicked back two years ago. I didn't know the rule existed really until I saw it kicked back. I just thought it's not fair that these rural communities don't have the option. And even if they have the option and stay under the 10%, then you're financially concerned about how they're going to be able to exist. I think this is a valid place to, to do some work. Obviously, I don't think it's going to be this session, since it's a 30-day and primarily budget. I don't think it would be a valid concern for this session. But build it up for a year and a half, get to your legislators, especially the rural legislators, as we said, and, and be able to move it through logically for 2027. I think that would be a logical move.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where, where it sits in terms of, what could we do to help get some better information for ourselves? You know, to do, you know, where to, like a little exploratory study to, to then figure out, is this worth us moving forward? You know, so how does that all get set up so that, you know, we could come back with some, and we need, we need hard facts if we're going to move forward and say, look, we've got, you know, these, this many people have expressed interest, have said, no, we're not going to, because we, we couldn't, things like that.
I think PCS.
Then could probably help us, yeah.
Great assistance for us.
Okay.
Really quick, before I go to you, I just want to, on our agenda, we only, we, we have an item two. This topic isn't listed, but I was allowing for it because I think it still falls under 4D, the Legislative Subcommittee Update. So I'm going to continue with it, but I just want to be clear that that's, like, I know we're not, it's not, it wasn't listed in item two, so I just want to, for transparency sake.
Meld 4D.
4D to the.
So I didn't notice that because I gave three things.
Anyway, we're.
So that's my fault. I didn't look at it. Close enough.
We're still okay to keep going.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, just for
Yeah.
record of, you know, people watching, like, that's, we, it's under 4D is where this conversation would happen, which I think is still appropriate because I think we're still giving guidance to the Legislative Subcommittee, which we would do in 4D anyway.
So, research from PCSM, it's too bad they're not on, but some, maybe it's you, Patty, I mean, I can certainly follow up
Follow up.
with Matt or Valerie, to see if they can, because they have staff that can do that kind of research, reach out to different legislators
Yeah.
and see have they gotten calls or whatever. My recollection with the CRI Vista and TRC, and maybe Dr. Russell could correct me if I'm wrong. And they, they blew it on an application. They put, it's not, I'm surprised they didn't put in an application for the following year. Because it seemed more of a clerical error on their part that they put the number at higher than 10%. Not that they weren't really desirous of having a school. They just kind of really made a pretty glaring error. And, you know, it was their own fault, but, I was surprised they haven't come back there. And then I'm curious, since KT is on, he's still on, right? Has anyone, KT, because you have that whole area that is rural and barren and that there are children. Does anyone come to you and ask you, like, hey, how, what do we do? How do we get a great school like that one over there? I guess he's gone.
I think he stepped away.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
So the research peats. So we don't fight for something that nobody else wants.
Right.
Great idea.
Okay, so then the third item, which was our biggest discussion item, was capital projects.
There's KT. Can I, before we go on, capital projects, summons KT again. Did you hear my question, KT?
I did not hear your question.
My question is, since you represent a huge rural area in your district, has anyone ever come to you in these four and a half years and said, how can we get a charter of our own?
There's been interest expressed, but in areas like Hobbs, I don't think the, the statute or rule is really a big impact in, in certain communities, you know? It'd be different if it was like, say, a Eunice, New Mexico, or maybe like an Artesia, New Mexico. But somewhere like Hobbs or, or Lovington, I would say it's probably more of a non-issue because there's just big districts in, in some of those communities.
Would you address?
One, right?
Yeah. And nobody's from like Loving or any of those areas?
No. No, it's been usually those who are in, like, the Lee County area. But in the, they're, they're looking at viability as well, right? So they want to make sure that if they're going to invest in, like, putting up some of the money to help the school, that it's going to be successful. And so they're looking at places like, it would be a Hobbs or a Lovington, less so in the smaller, very small rural communities.
Okay. Okay, capital projects. So we have had numerous suggestions as to how do we make money more available to our schools so that they can add on, get into a quality building? And there's been discussions about, and remember that the difficulty, one of the difficulties is the match. For that, for a school to be able to come up with, and the match is tied to the district. So for a school to come up with 50, 60, 70, 80% match, we don't have charter schools that can do that. At the same time, some charters have said, even if we could get the match, let's say we can. The building that we would have to build if we funded through grants through PSFA, the school that we would have to build would have things in it because there's a requirement from PSFA. There's things in it that we wouldn't need, and we wouldn't be able to get what we really wanted. So we've been more successful. We've been more successful in going through private funding through nonprofit foundations and getting a building that we wanted as opposed to, and Cottonwood Classic, I mean, John has said that over and over again. You know, if I had, if I had, if I went through the grant program, I wouldn't have the building that we have. And that's, you know, he is adamant about that. So I get that. So there's, you know, there's those concerns, match, whether, and we had Bridget in the folder, is that survey? Lucy, can you get that survey? We let Bridget do a quick survey with schools to see, you know, are you planning on expanding and getting you, are you interested in going through the grant process? You know, if there was a standard lower match, like 15%, would that, you know, would, would that make it easier for you? At the end of the day, there's just so much we just don't know. There's so many questions and so many unanswered because we're not the experts in this. So the Subcommittee met two weeks ago. We had some, there was two, there were two school leaders that were there. There was a former member of the PSFA that was there. It was an attorney that, I think that's it, right? Oh, and Matt, Matt was there as well. And the consensus was that we need a study on this. We need to know where, you know, we know some of the weak links. We know some of the problems. But do we have a really good solution? And most importantly, are the solutions legislative? Or are the solutions something that we can work through a cooperative effort with PSFA, PSCOC? Can we do that? Is it policy that we need to see if they can change? As opposed to everything being a legislative fix? There may be some legislative fixes that are needed. But they may not all be legislative fixes. But we don't know. We need people who are experts in this to give us, here's, here's the biggest obstacles in schools being able to get adequate facilities. And here's some recommendations as to pathways that you can take to try to remedy the situation. But it seems like, month after month, when we meet, it's like, maybe this is the answer. And then we go kind of down that rabbit hole, and it's like, mm, that's probably not going to work that well. And it's like, we're just stabbing at stuff because I'm not, you know, I'm not that person that can, that has those kinds of answers. But there are certainly people that do and have done these studies. So our recommendation is to go to the Budget Subcommittee and ask for funding for the study. Stuart?
Well, I think part of their idea with, that John has, that he couldn't have got the building. There, there is a list, and I didn't bring it with me, of accommodations that were made for charter schools. And there's some confusion in how that was related to people in, in IPSFA, I'm just going to say. There's a lot of things on that list that are things that are evolving that we are, even though they're excluded from that, they're still going to have to provide those things, like having a cafeteria, having at least a warming kitchen, having a library. Those are big things that charter schools are going to need anyway. So some of that list is obsolete. Some of it is an accommodation for a very small charter school. But the reality is, I don't think that that forces the charter school into the, the degree of change that John is thinking it did. I, I think, I'm just, that's my own opinion. I, I feel like the reality here is that we need to be separated from the, the specifically state-sponsored charter schools. Need to be separated from that district because they're not a part of the district. There's no legitimate legitimacy in the requirement that that, that they're part of the district. And I think it's a very simple thing that, that the, was, I think, part of the original legislation that's never been corrected. And so that part right there, I think, would change everything. If we were just separated, then they had, then they would have to come up with a specific match for those schools. It necessitates that. So I think there are several things, and I have to admit, I would love to get something in front of some senators right now. Because I feel like right now is a real opportunity that is, we don't have, some of the people that have been really keeping us from doing this are no longer there, and that it's, I think it's some things that could be, could be addressed. And I, I would love to see if there's anything in that list that we could, could bring. We have some senators that, Michael Padilla's already told us. Bring two things to me and I'll push them. So I, I kind of would still love to see if there's anything that we could bring to them without having to have too much, I don't know, too much behind it. Maybe what I would consider no brainers, that if we could do that, I would love to do that. I understand the need for a study. I, I agree. I, I just am in a hurry. I, I see the millions of dollars that charter schools are foregoing and people that are stuck in places where they shouldn't be stuck in. And, and so I have a sense of urgency about it. Do I understand the logistics of the whole thing? I do. I just, I'm anxious. And so I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Obin Sheen?
Just saying, for some clarity, for me, I am wondering, are we looking at just legislative changes? Or are we looking at a more strategic, long-term facility solution? Because I'm, and I'm wondering if that's, one, if it needs to go to Strategic Planning Subcommittee. But two, is it necessarily the authorizer's role and responsibility to facilitate facilities? Or is that like an outside entity? Because I just don't know that I'm necessarily, like Commissioner Gibson said, that I'm no expert in facilities. I mean, Commissioner Ingham is much more in that milieu, but I'm just, that's my question. Is, is that necessarily an authorizer's responsibility to help schools figure out their facility issues? I never, when I was at Cottonwood, and we were dealing with this right from day one, I never expected my authorizer to be the expert and provide me technical assistance or anything. I felt like this is on us and we need to get, figure out what needs to be done. On the flip side, there are things like, why are LEAs, if state charters are considered LEAs and the vast majority of rule and statute, why wouldn't that be a quick fix, right? To, to disconnect them from their LEA in terms of any facility or capital project? And then potentially other, I know you're, you've been fighting with PSFA about what are the things that should be, that are already on the books that just need to be enforced? For me, those, that would feel like that's our responsibility. The other, I'm not quite sure. So I would, I would need some convincing that that's what we should be going into.
I don't know if anybody's talking, but there's no volume.
All right, sorry. You know, if someone can show me, here, here, these. You know, if someone can show me here, here, these, these, this is what needs to be fixed. And then I can parse out, well, that's, you know, you know, PCS and M as the, they need to go advocate for that. That's not within my role. But there's not, you know, I think, yes, making schools, because they are individual LEAs, why aren't they separated from the district in terms of match and things like that? I do think that's, um, within our purview, but I think there's a lot that isn't. But I can't put a finger on everything that we're, that, you know, we're looking at. And that's where I struggle because it seems like every time the conversation comes up, it's something else and then it's something else. And I don't, I don't have clarity as to what direction we're, we're needing to go in. And, but I do wanna stay in our lane for sure.
Okay, I, I agree in that when we're talking about individual schools, that those schools do have to figure it out. And I'm not, I, I, I know that it may well be that, that they're the, um, nonprofit or for-profit or whatever is a better solution for any school. I don't, I, I, my concern is that there seems to be a specific, things that are, that are statutory limitations that, um, are common to at least the, the state sponsored charter schools. That put them in a place where they cannot, the, the access isn't even there. And I think in my mind, that is something that the authorizer is, um, I, I think that we have the duty to make the, um, charter school option as equally funded as a district. And, and when we're not, then I think that that is in our purview. That is something that we need to, not just advocate for. I would agree. We need a stronger voice from the PCS and M when, when they're there. And I don't know Matt's voices is, is, he, he, he knows how to, he works his magic. But from us, I do believe that there is some realm here that is, when something is, um, wrong, and I'm gonna say, I feel like there's some things that, that, um, the, uh, capital funding that is straight up wrong and it is discriminatory and it's not, it's not equity. And so I feel like that does seem like, in my mind. And if, if, if the commission goes out of that, I'm gonna do it myself. Because I feel it, I, when something's wrong, I need, I need to address it. And so that's my calling right now. So I, I, I still, I think I'm gonna talk to legislators that I know now just to bring that issue up to, so they can see it. So when the legislation comes up, at least they have some background to it. Because I, I feel like it needs to be addressed. Okay.
Commissioner Creo?
So, I mean, I know it's somewhere here, um, the people on next, on the next section, allowing someone to speak on behalf of the commission. But I'm, I'm very comfortable with Stuart representing, well, in terms of what he just said, the idea of removing the obstacle, right? Because charters are all about opportunity. And I agree with Patty, it's not our purview to have, to do their work for them, for, for charters. But it is our purview, and as I agree with Stuart, to make the, uh, the process more equitable. And so that, you know, schools can have what they need. And that's, that's where we come in, I think, on this particular issue. Whether or not anything gets on to call this legislature, certainly for the next. I mean, I know for you, Stuart, there's quite a bit of urgency and the idea of saying next, uh, doesn't sit well, but, I think this is something we need to continue to push.
I'll say, because in our performance framework, we have cash on hand. We have facility issues that come up in annual reports. I think we, we grade schools on their financial performance. So if they're not getting adequate finances, we might be actually giving them yellows and reds when they could be getting greens if they got the appropriate amount of money. Possible, right? Like, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's ways in which we're actually, it is under our purview because we oversee that and it's in our performance framework. So I think if there's schools that are getting hindered by that, it actually is a direct impact on us and the way we are overseeing schools. I think it, it does come up annually when we get reports back from schools. I mean, they closed a school because of, like, the facilities were an issue during that closure process. Like, the way the school was actually like, there were facility issues in that closing process as well. Like that, when, when that, when that report came back from that specific space and it was about the facility, like, kids should not be here? I think that was almost like the nail in the coffin for that school. So I do think facilities are well under our purview. And we know it's an issue for schools. Very well aware. And also, I think, once again, I wonder how many people may not be going down the charter route to opening a school because they hear about how difficult the facility issue is. When we have schools opening up in shopping centers and then they can't get the correct enrollment in order to sustain their campus, that's, that's our issue too. So I do think, I don't think it's necessarily outside of our purview as advocates. Not necessarily that it's, we need to go in and individually, school by school, try to figure out problems. But the overarching system? Like, if we make it general, that it's about all, all schools and it's about all, like, I think that's where it's more appropriate for us. I think if we ever start getting involved with individual schools, that would give me pause. But if the, if the system itself, like, if there's a legislative piece that's hindering our schools from success and facilities are a genuine issue and, and they impact so many different things. I mean, I know so many school leaders who are like, yeah, we have a great program and we bring families in and they don't want their kids playing on concrete. Like, we have a parking lot for our, our playground. They don't wanna come to this school. And we're saying, we want more kids to have access to these quality options. And the reality is, facilities do hinder families from coming to schools. That's just real. So I do think, I, I think it's okay for us to proceed. I do think it'd be great to get the study so we actually have, like, data behind us. Because I do think right now it would be very difficult to be like, hey, this is a problem. Sure. Like, they've been hearing it for years that it's a problem. That's not new. But if we actually have some data behind it, we have some actual statistics, some information to support it and make it tangible, I think that's when it's most appropriately gonna be rectified, possibly. Because I do think, I, I imagine when, I've listened to folks go up to the legislature and are like, this is a problem, this is a problem. And they don't have anything necessarily behind them besides what I imagine the legislators would call hearsay. You know, like, they hear problems all the time. We are one of millions of problems that they're hearing about, right? So if there's nothing behind it, that's like, here's the exact problem with numbers, there's no, you know, there's no emotion behind it. It's not a thi- it's, here's the numbers, here's exactly what it looks like, and here's the, the fix. And you lay that out, I think that's when it's gonna be most successful. So I agree with all of it.
I think you'd, um, to me, you also need to attach a dollar to, you know, okay, if we're gonna fix this, what is, what does this look like? And maybe, you know, have a, well, let's stretch this out over five years, a ten-year plan to get, you know, because, um, I can imagine going to a hearing and then them saying, this is gonna cost a hundred million dollars or, you know, a billion dollars. And it's like, they're making it up and we don't have anything to counter and say, no, it's not all. Here's a plan that could be more palatable for the budget and everything else. You know, you take schools, you know, that are at the bottom of the list and work on them first. Or, you know, schools that are in the strip mall first. You know, you can create a priority list. You know, everyone wants, you know, their best space and I want every kid in a best space. But some schools are in inadequate space. You know, they are. And maybe they'd like more, but they can wait. And then there's other schools that need triage at this point in time.
Commissioner Creo?
So since it seems that there's overall agreement on this, what, my next question, my question is, what's next? So that we, this doesn't just, that'd been an idea that just floats around.
But we did ask.
What's next and who?
Right, so we did ask, uh, because the, uh, Elise, is it Elise? Elise, um, who formerly worked for PSCOC, she was on the call. And she said she could create a scope of work for a study so that we would know what we, because it's like, if I make a scope of work, you know, but she can. So I have to ask Bridget because I thought she was supposed to have that to us by now. And I don't remember getting copied in the email with that.
Um, Commissioner Gibson, I, um, I will have to check the date that she told me. I, I think that she was going to have it before your next subcommittee meeting, but not before.
She's gonna have it for, before this meeting.
No, before the, before the.
Okay, right. But that's the plan. There is actually a vendor on the state list that does these kinds of studies. So we're thinking we can go through the REC and get that contract executed quicker. Because there.
Patty, there would be on the work session for October and then for, and then the vote in the regular meeting in October.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, the budget subcommittee will meet, have the scope of work, look at it, we'll have an idea hopefully of what the dollar amount would be and they will bring it forward for a vote. Okay?
I just wanted to say that, that was the, the point that took me over to the reality that we need to do this is that, um, we, we we had the opportunity, Matt said, look, you guys are the specific entity that is best positioned.
Right.
To do this.
The study, yeah.
Because PCS and M probably couldn't do it. We, we talked about LEFC. They may not have the, w- w- we need to have, uh, a charter focused agenda, to be honest with you. And, and we're the ones that can do that. So I do appreciate you guys' support in this and so.
Yeah, the discussion was that if the, if we left it to the LESCLFC to do the study, it would probably be a fairly jaded study. We wouldn't get what we wanted. This, who knows how long it would take. This, we can, you know, put the contract out, have specific dates and have the information for us. So, okay. All right, thanks.
Anything else, so before I move on, anything else for, just to like kick, finish off 4D? Is there anything else from legislative that made it off?
No, that's enough.
I know, just in case.
I had a question asking back to, um, the transportation issue. And I'm not sure, um, if someone could help me understand why first year isn't funded? Is that? And is, is there any clear intent as to what they were, like, what is?
Based the funding on membership and because that school had no membership?
Oh, no way.
You don't get funded. Yeah, that's how the statute reads?
Yeah.
That your transportation funding is based on the prior year membership and you had no membership?
Well.
It's a simple.
I'm sure is that there are multiple examples of how, um, other divisions and departments handle that kind of an issue. I would, again, I, I mean, I think it's a good issue, but I also think, man, there should be a lot of other people that are hitting that to try and get that changed. Yeah, anyway, okay, thank you.
I guess on this for Patty, this is exactly on this point. What is our next step on this particular issue? And, uh, because we had it last year too.
We had it last year, but we actually, unfortunately, because we had been told and, um,
An SBA was.
And SBA was going to do it. We waited for them and then they didn't do it. So we're going to have to, um, contact some legislators to see. And I'm gonna say probably down by me, I would say anywhere where a new charter is opening, that's your best, that to look at a legislator to say, hey, you know, this is a problem.
And then to who writes, and then if we weren't ready for this next session coming up, who writes, I mean, I just wanna make sure that.
Legislative services would write the legislation.
They need sponsors first.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
All right, that'll take us to item three. So this is discussion of the PEC PED MOU and roles and responsibilities. So let me give you a quick update on the first section. Actually, did I, that was already a month ago or did we meet? So I'm trying to, no, I, um, I told you guys about Sam and I meeting with the secretary last month, right? Okay, got it. So that happened, so then policy subcommittee met. Okay, yeah, so this is easy. So, um, I'm actually just gonna hand it over to Sam because I actually don't have any, like, super a lot of updates. Um, I did, we, I, I have been, um, asking Deputy Secretary DeBelle for the three issues that we already sent to them in May. We, like, like I reported last month, we, we met with them. They didn't have any feedback on those at this time. I just got word from her yesterday that they expect to have some kind of feedback for us next week. So ideally, we'll be able to present what their feedback is to, to the policy subcommittee this next month and we'll get that back to the commission by October, um, what their proposal is. So the next part is gonna be, I'm gonna hand it over to Commissioner Obensheim because, like I said last month, the, the secretary actually asked us for something specific that we hadn't proposed. But as part of the conversation that came up, the roles and responsibilities and the enmeshment or muddiness of those was very clear to her. And so she asked for the commission to come up with a roles and responsibilities guide and propose that to be included in the MOU as well, to clarify roles and responsibilities, turn it from muddy into crystal clear water. And so that's what Commissioner Obensheim will talk us through.
I don't know if Commissioner Obensheim will do all the talking, but, um, that, you just explained it perfectly. I think what you'll, what you'll see in the document that's here and it's also in the policy subcommittee folder, um, is what June would put together and how do entities interact and relate? And what are the statutory and, um, support for that? So what is PED's responsibility? What is PEC's responsibility? What is charter school division's responsibilities? And so that's laid out there at the, the top. And then scrolling down to page three, then we start looking specifically at what are the roles and responsibilities for state charter schools? So PED, what we really talked about in big picture was PED has a responsibility for all the public schools. But PEC does not. So that's, that's already a, a pretty clear distinction. The challenge is then that what happens is, um, why are charters dealt with differently than all public schools that PED oversees? And so that's what we're trying to get down to with our MOU. So they'll understand that they need to be doing something differently than with state charters than they are with all public schools. They do it now and are we gonna treat them fairly? So the idea about the two percent, for example, then who controls that? And then ultimately and provide the description that's required of in statute and a detailed description of, you know, how that money's spent, which I think is really the biggest kind of rub in the terms of the MOU. So I'm not gonna, everything I would like for June would just describe how it's laid out. So if you have any, um, if you wanna provide comment, it will be at that. And see if there's something that we've missed. Is there something that, you know, is, is not clear to you? You can provide that, that comment in here. But I think the idea is now we just wanna be able to get it together and send it back to the secretary for her review and then continue our conversation with the MOU and is, are people gonna be ready to sign off on? And is, are people going to be ready to sign off on that at some point in the near future? And anybody else in the committee, if you want to add before we ask Julie to outline things?
Only thing I'll say is, one of the biggest focuses that we had was really trying to connect everything to statute, rule, law, like, nothing is just left up to like, well, this is how we think it should be. We're actually kind of going back to the original law, original statute, original rule, like, how things were set up, and trying to just kind of unpeel the layers that have been added that are incorrect, and go back to the original legislation and be like, this is exactly what it says, and this is how it should be carried out. So that was, that, that's what hopefully you'll see too in here, is that none of it is like idealistic. It's actually all connected exact, like, straight to statute. So that's what our biggest intention is too, is to try to like pull away the like, oh, PEC's trying to overstep or do too much, and really, we're just trying to do exactly what we were elected to do.
And ask PED to do exactly what the statute says. Right.
Um, do you want to just, do, do you want Julia to do an overview? Do you want to just go to questions?
Can I just throw one thing out there?
Please.
Okay, so I'm going to say, in statute, it requires the PEC to write a State of Public Education report every year. I, is it, I thought it was, uh, uh, okay, that's what I was gonna, I didn't see it.
I, I can just answer that.
Julia can.
I'm not, I'm not positive the state of that. The charter school law was intended for all authorizers, of which you are one, to provide basically a subsection report on what you see. So it's on page, it's on page two. And, and there's a subsection to provide that. And then PED is supposed to annually provide to the legislature, is one of their duties, an overarching one. Now, I don't know if, I, I, I don't know, I don't think it's being done. I know years ago, when I was here previously, the commission was saying, well, where's that report? And, and they kind of threw one together for one year. So there, there are two things on that page two that I think are presently kind of not happening. One is that the vocational education section has been moved to another, I think another department. I don't even think it's the PED anymore, Workforce Solutions, and then, which I think has a new name now, so. And then the other is that annual report. But you as an, you are only as, what your authorizer are intended to do your report, and you could start to do that, but it would be given to PED. You know, APS is supposed to, whoever's, whoever does authorize, authorizes charter schools. Let me just walk you through a couple of things, and in particular, that I thought were really interesting. First, I, I want to say, as your attorney, I feel like you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. I feel like there are some things that didn't make sense that have kind of moved that, you know, ideally would be cleaned up in legislation, and if there is legislation to, to do some of this, for example, you shouldn't be anymore, it should get cleared up that you're not doing work on vocational education, which actually would be a big, huge thing if you were doing a lot of work on it. The other is what to, what to do about that report, and do you want to do that? But overall, you've got this umbrella of funding, of general fund for the Public Education Department on page one. Then the Charter School Division and you are funded through the 2%. The, in, in kind of clarifying what, what statute says in two places. CSD is created in the Charter School Act, and their duties are in the Charter School Act, which is to provide staff support to the PEC. There is another logistical thing where they, because in the administrative attachment, because they're a division within PED, and they need to operate consistent with how PED does that. So we have that second bullet at the top of page two, that they are to operate as a division within PED consistent with PED guidelines. The last bullet, I think, is one of the areas, in my view, that's, that's a little bit of that muddiness, which is, there aren't any statutory duties for CSD to go back to PED. And there's a lot of, that's murky to me. If the secretary asks, you know, the, the director or anyone else, please come to, be on the subcommittee, I don't hear that they're asking the chair to do that. On the other hand, I do think it's appropriate, I do think there's, I just think it's murky, and I think there's some appropriateness on one side or the other, obviously, if Director Russell wants to respond to that. I just want to point out where I thought the murkiness happened. Then the other thing that struck me really clearly is that there are some staff that are paid for out of two pots of money. One general fund, and they go do general fund stuff for PED, and they do CSD stuff as well. So there's a couple of examples right now, they're historic examples, and, and that made a lot of sense to people. That these are different functions, general fund versus 2% money, so 50/50, or 70/30, you know? And, and somebody came up with that, and everybody said, yeah, that's a good idea. The other area of murkiness, which you've spoken about many times, which is what the MOU does, which says, oh, your PED's going to get part of the 2% without that specificity. So sometimes it's really specific, you know, and actually, when we were discussing, we were like, oh, yeah, this person, and this person, and this person, and can we pay for this? Or, you know, so there's that conversation, and then there's this other murky category of what is that for? My view in preparing this document, that was really clear to me, is it's not charter, it's not the Charter School Act stuff. It's the top of the page things. And I, I think Commissioner Obenshan's already said that, you know, that it's the, it's the, the general administration of state charter schools that gets merged, general fund versus 2%. That was so clear to me that, you know, when they want to hire somebody for IT, oh, we need it 50%, and it's very specific. And then you're like, budget for schools, really murky. So also, what was very kind of illuminating to me in the conversation was that the roles and responsibilities as paid for should be separated from the Charter School Act. So initially, we had them all merged together, and then we did a part A and a part B, which really clarified a lot for me. Under the charter school law, and you, it, it's, it's, it is in here. The secretary has really defined roles under the Charter School Act, to hear any appeals, but for any charters, not just for state charters. Sometimes we feel like the Charter School Act is for us, and it's not only us. And then if you look on page four and five, anything that's in the PED role, there is, there is a lot of data that the Charter School Division relies on for you that gets into the Charter School Division annual report. And sometimes it's through, a lot of times it's through the performance framework. Sometimes it's in the general narrative, obviously Vista, SCORE, but those are, I'm a little bit, um, they're in here because that's kind of the direction that we wanted to go. But actually, that actually even goes back up to the general duties of the PED. It's in here, but it's not specific. PED has to do some kind of accountability for all schools, and you use that. They have to make sure that all schools do, comply with special ed, all schools comply with civil rights. And then you utilize those for your state schools. So it's down here, but that's a, I'm fine with how it is, but I just wanted to point out, it's a little bit of a mix. And then I, I should point out that I, that because that report that Commissioner Engle was just raising isn't being done, I, I have it listed in the top and not in the bottom. It is a requirement in the bottom, we can put it back in in the bottom. But every other single thing is what you spend all of your time on. Um, the, the last, I just want to highlight this because it was relevant to the last conversation and this one. The PEC has an obligation in the Charter School Act to look at national best practices, to look at overarching issues related to charters. And this group of you, I'm going to say more than any other, is, is going into that realm in a lot of ways. Your performance framework is in that realm for me. You're asking schools to become more accountable on specific things is in that realm to me. The conversation you just had on something's wrong, or we need to look generally at, at capital ally issues for state charters is in that realm to me. So I just wanted to highlight that. And it's why you go to conferences, why you bring back ideas. I even think your strategic plan, if you wanted me to stay where it fell under statute, falls under that. Are we seeing the whole picture? So in terms of how I'm looking at that to, where do those pieces go? That piece is increasingly expanding, and, and has been in the work that you've been doing. That's how I see you staying within your, your lane.
So really quick, before we go to commissioner questions, I do want to go backwards to the intent of this, why we're doing this. One of the things that was apparent, well, and it's been apparent, I know for many years, is every time a chair has to go meet with a new secretary, you start from scratch, right? You have to actually go talk to a legislator. You're starting from scratch, right?
Every time.
Every single time.
Legislature.
You start from scratch, right, of like, this is what we do, this is how it looks, this is our duty, like, right? It, that's just, that's just real. So this document, that, that's one thing we tried to, Sam and I kept trying to talk to the secretary and be like, because positively, she's like, tell me what's wrong with the system that we have now. You know, what's not working? We're like, there's still a lot of work. Because it, it's not a person or a personality that's the issue. It's really not. The system is set up for complications. So when we talked to her, we were like, we, like, we're, we're grateful she's engaging with us, and actually, for her to be the one calling us in for meetings, and her to be the one, like, great, that's abnormal. And I think Patty probably more than any of us know that. It's, it's very abnormal to have a secretary that's like, okay, let me give you an, talk to me. Tell me what's going on, you know, tell, like, explain this to me. She's the anomaly. So we tried to convince her of that, of like, you engaging with us in this way is not what we typically get. We usually just get pushback from secretaries, right? Of like, go do that, get, you know, get out of here.
No, you can't do that.
And, and just no, right? And, and there's not really a clarity in the secretary even why they're saying no, or what the role is, or what. And, and so every time the PEC gets put in the situation of like having to explain or trying to figure out how to make this system look clear to a new person, and it creates a lot of tumultuous transitions for everyone. And I think at the end of the day, that negatively impacts charter schools. Because then the secretary has an, an idea of the roles and responsibilities that's not actually real, right? So this is, the secretary, the secretary is like, I get it, I get it. I understand the roles, I understand the responsibility, I get it. And we're like, okay, let's put that in writing. You know, let's put that understanding of the roles and responsibilities, let's put it in writing. So in January 2027, a new secretary is going to come. The idea is, is that this is attached to our MOU, and the new secretary can go in. They can have their new attorney, they can have a new deputy secretary, they can have new commissioners take a look at this, and it's all clear and agreed upon that this is what it looks like. So there's not this like, well, let's try to come up again with what these roles and responsibilities look like, and let's try to correct, anchor to statute. So that's what we're, if, if you can have in the back of your minds that you're giving this document to a person who has no idea what the PEC is, maybe doesn't really have a, not even a ton of knowledge in charter schools, right? Because we've had secretaries that don't even really understand charter schools. That's just real. So this document is supposed to be the like baseline, of like, this is what this looks like. So think of it from that lens, and we do want your feedback on this. If there's any part in here where you're like, I think this is still confusing, like, I don't think this creates the roles and responsibilities, and like how the structure should work appropriately to someone who's never seen it before, who has never participated with us, who's never participated in PED before, that this is the baseline of like, this is what this system looks like. So that's the purpose of this document.
And it fully delineates responsibility. It fully delineates it.
But people aren't just making up whatever, and, and that goes both ways too. That's from when new commissioners come on, and if they have something in their head of like what the commission should be doing, that's not appropriate, because this is once again anchored in statute, right? So it's for the PEC not to overstep, and also for the PED to not overstep on either side. So we are wanting to send this back to the secretary and Deputy Secretary DeBelle. We did ask them if we could give us the month, have us take a look at this, but we would like to send this to, I mean, I would like to send this to Amanda DeBelle today, if we get consensus that this is the good first draft, right? Like, I expect them to, once again, take a look at this, give us a response to it, give us feedback, what they agree, what they don't agree, and then we'll come back and discuss it again with the entire commission as we get that feedback. But that's what we're looking for from the rest of the commission today. Commissioner Kriya?
So in looking back from the beginning, let's, let's see, page two, Public Education Commission. Should there be something in that section about, is made up of 10 people elected in different districts throughout the state? So somebody looking at this is like, well, who are the commission? What, where do you come from? Most people don't know. I mean, quite frankly, it's like even last night, I was in this meeting. It was a neighborhood meeting, and I always kind of start things and it gets a little loud. I'm the Public Education Commissioner you didn't know you had, because that's usually the case. And so it might be good to have something in there about who we are, that we're elected every four years, rotating terms. Oh, thank.
And then I'm going to ask, I'm going to like, I think that's a good note, and then I, I think Julia can craft it, because once again, we're trying to do it based on exactly what the statute says, so.
Yeah.
That way, we're not just adding stuff, and she can put it into there.
Well, I liked your comment about, because I remember the last time we haggled with them over the MOU, just the whole nature of you could just hand this to somebody who was just elected as a representative and say, here's who we are, here's what we do, and they can get a really good sense. Because, you know, it's not through any fault of their own, no one's just made the effort, and they certainly haven't, because they don't know that they have a commissioner also. So I, I, I like where we're going here.
And I mean, we are a niche, we're a very niche, little teeny tiny section of state government, right? Like, of all, like, think of the span of state government, and then even the span of PED. We're still just like this little tiny piece of it. So it is understandable that even a secretary would come in and be like, what is this? What is, what is happening? And the way we do authorizing in New Mexico is unique as well, us being an elected board, right? Like, that's different too. That's not typical across the country. So it is understandable that they come in to like, what is this? What's going on? But, correct, we, we really just want to go back to, like, we, we just kept trying to tell the secretary, this isn't an issue that you've created, but we are asking you to solve it. You know, like, this is an issue that came up in 2007, when the commission was created. You know, it's created with good intentions, but now it's gone almost 20 years without being kind of relooked at, of like, okay, how's it actually working? How's it actually, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense? And I think as the policy subcommittee went through, and we were really looking at the statute, the statute's not bad for us. It's actually, like, if we followed statute, it actually does support our independence. It supports the work we do, it supports our obligations pretty well, to where we. It supports the work we do. It supports our obligations pretty well to where we don't need. I mean, that's the one thing the secretary told us during the session is like, I don't see why we need legislative change. Technically, she's right. But this is, in addition to the three items we already gave, this would radically change the way we can operate. I mean, in a positive way, an incredibly positive way, so.
On page three, in section one, P E C duty, should there be, because I know you mentioned performance framework. And I'm just thinking about how we have, you know, academics, budget and executive function or whatever we call it. That's governance. That can be mentioned there because we do, I would say oversee and support, you know, effective boards slash some of them are councils, whatever, governance. And that's a huge part. I don't know if any of you read the New Mexican, they did this massive article. And, you know, I'm disappointed, one, and I'm going to let Erin know this. Did you get a call from him, Chair Burt? Did you get a call from Erin from the New Mexican about this massive article? I didn't get a call and he's talking about all the schools in my district. He didn't contact anyone from P E C, which I thought was extremely, well, disrespectful and also just bad investigative reporting. But the thing is, and I don't understand how she could say this. Dr. Veronica Garcia was saying that they're not clear on how the accountability structure between like P E Cs and charters. They seem to, charters are in this kind of nebulous gray area. And like, nothing could be further from the truth because there's so much more accountability, especially state charters than there are for district schools. So that was just really awful. So anyway, like, in that section.
Do you think that, see where I, so I took out, well, and the reason why I'm taking that out, Julia, is because if the performance framework changes, we don't need to come in and change it. So we need to be more, less specific. But the performance framework with academic and then operations and finance, that's what you're.
Operations, finance, and something having to do with their board governance, oversight of their board.
So that's actually, it's down.
I think it's different. I just, was that misread?
So that's actually not, so governing council training is on the very last page under C S D duty. That's actually not a P E C duty. Governance council trainings are not P E C.
It's the oversight piece, not the training piece. That's what I.
So then that's their organizational portion of their performance framework.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think, oh, not operations, so organizational, that's what.
There we go.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's what I'll do, operation. Academic is some, and then organizational and finance, operations.
Is there need to be anything in there around?
Just oversight.
The steps on P E C side, like we do, we go to the, you mean any input hearings? Anything around that relative to propositions for new charters?
So that's under item two. So that's approve, approve of conditions or deny new applications. And it says it's required to hold one community and public input session.
I didn't see that little one. No, great. Thank you. You guys, this is well done, you guys.
I mean, it really was going backwards, just straight from statute. It did make, I think that made it easier because we were so focused on like, what exactly does the statute say? And we're not going to put anything in here that is not specifically backed up by statute or some kind of rule. Like, there's nothing in here that isn't supported.
Yeah, we want to do this.
Right, yeah. Right. Yeah, ideally, this is, like, if this could be included, like, we're imagining it being an attachment to the M O U, kind of like, or appendix A or something like that, where it's like roles and responsibility. And once again, this is something the secretary asked us to do. So this isn't even something we came up with to do. But after the conversation, she asked the P E C to come up with something like this so that it was clear to her. Because it still was, I think that we kept going back and forth because the secretary, which I know her focus is on all schools. And so she was telling Sam and I like, we need to work together because we serve all schools. And Sam and I like, correct, you do. We don't. We don't serve all schools, you know, and she's like, hold on, do this, do this, that, you know. So I do think it was the closest, I feel like we've come to any secretary, like, wanting to dive in at least to be like, wait, what? Okay, bring, like, show me what this looks like then, you know? Which is great. And I'm grateful to have the next, you know, year plus to figure this out and solidify it ideally before someone else comes in and we have to restart the whole process.
Well, I do, I think that's a really important point because I do think if we can get this codified, and that's what we kept going back to her about, we want it in writing so then we have something to reference. Like we said, just live up to the statute and we'd be happy, right? So it seems like a pretty straightforward, you know, attempt anyway. I think it's, the idea is that maybe no one else has had a chance to influence her on the other side yet. So let's get that going and.
But ideally, this is making it, no matter what, I mean, even if it comes to the point where we are going to, you know, if we ever try to change legislation again to where we truly, like, we remove that administrative attachment, this is once again showing how P E C really is self-sufficient outside of very few operational items that P E D. Like, P E D's duty to P E C or charter schools is actually very minimal. And that's what we're really trying to show in this chart is, actually, the P E C pretty much operates independently already. So let's codify that. Like, let's actually let us operate independently. Correct. And we just want this, once again, for charter school leaders to be able to feel like, okay, this is what I can expect regardless of who's governor, regardless of who's secretary, and regardless of the 10 commissioners up here. This is it, right? This is, like, if we can get this down for them, ideally, they feel a little bit more consistency. You're, every two, I mean, there could be massive changes for charter schools on this commission every two years. We have to protect the commission from that and the charter schools themselves.
I just wanted to raise one other note. It's in here, but I'm wondering if we want to highlight it more. This commission has contractual responsibilities to its charters. And you have this contract that's required for you to report how that 2% is being spent. But a little bit what we have in here is what does the P E D do, what does C S D do, what does P E C do? And, and at least from a legal perspective, a contractual duty is, that's put in statute, first is pretty unusual. And second, it kind of carries a lot of legal weight. And I know that you have schools that say to you, show us where you're reporting back on the budget. And it's in here, but I didn't know if you're good with that.
Because the proposal right now from the commission to the P E D is that the 2% comes to us and we control. So we would have access to being able to fully report in specifics to where this, that's not the duty of the P E D because we already asked for the 2% money to come directly to us and not to P E D. So that's the proposal we have out to the, just in case everyone doesn't remember. Like, what we already proposed to them was that we have input, that we are the hiring committee, we're the C S D director and P E C liaison. We asked for the charter schools to be removed as component units so that they're not a part of the P E D audits. And we asked that the 2% money goes directly to P E C. And no longer, not a penny, like, that was our proposal, that not even a penny goes to P E D. So I don't think we need to, that is our proposal. So when they come back with feedback, then we can do that. But I, I think we should assume that that is what, that is what should happen. So that is correct then on this.
So just so I'm clear, so at that point, if they accept that, then they will give us their costs that they provide for us that are outside of C S D's.
So, no, our proposal is that they no longer fund anything outside of C S D. So, nothing. So they would not be giving us any, they would just, anything that they're funding with 2%, they would need to reroute with a different funding stream. And 2% money would come solely to P E C and C S D. Or, actually, technically in statute, it goes to C S D. P E C then creates the budget with it and submits it unchanged, and that's it. So that's what we're trying to follow in statute, is that money goes to C S D, P E C creates the budget for the entire 2%. P E D has nothing to do with it. That's our proposal that's out there right now. Then we can be very specific with exactly what the 2% money is spent on, because we have it.
I just thought there was thing that they, providing the data was the biggest thing, right? And so that, what our argument is, they do that for every school.
Right, yeah. Well, and it's separate, so their, so their biggest argument is actually the Budget Bureau. That approving additional budgets and getting more R F Ps and getting more R F Is and getting more, you know, like, that the budget part is what's costing them more. The Budget Bureau is where they're saying most of the additional money goes to.
We take care of our own budget and they.
No, they would still, our argument is that the Budget Bureau should see state charter schools just like any other L E A. And if they support a traditional school district, without the school district paying any portion of their general, of their S E G to the P E D, right? Traditional school districts have 100% of their funding go to them. They call, they get access to P E D an unlimited amount, and they do not pay a penny for it. Across the entire P E D, they do not pay a single penny to get support from P E D. What we're saying is that our state charters are the exact same. That they should get access to everything that P E D does with no money giving, being given to the P E D. That they should not have to give up, they should not have, they should not give any of their S E G to have access to the support from P E D. But that's not what the intention is of the 2%. So that's our proposal that's out there to them already. So I don't think we're backing away from that. Like, we're not going to try to negotiate anything else other than that at this time. So that's what this document reflects, is that position.
Hey, awesome.
And if they have feedback, then we can talk about it. But until that, this is what we feel like is most aligned with statute.
I would just say that if you read the statutory, there's no leg to stand on other than to agree with it.
That past practice, you know?
And we did, I will say Commissioner Obenchain having been a C S D director years ago and being able, like, I think that's the one thing that, and I'm sure Patty had this experience too. Every time I went to a new secretary, they'd be like, well, this is a brand new issue. Let's figure it out. We're like, no, 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 this isn't a new issue. Like, it's new to you. This is a very old issue, right? So it was, it was nice having Sam be like, actually, even back then, yeah. Like, it's not a new issue, but we are asking this secretary to help us solve it. Oh, great. Okay. And just to date it for folks watching this back, Commissioner Taylor's available online. Okay, anything else on here? Okay, I'll have Sam work with Julia on this again, just to do like a final edit. And then we'll send this over to the secretary and deputy secretary DeBelle as well. And have them take a look at this as well and hopefully, once again, give us that timeline for feedback. Ideally, if we really do get feedback from the first three items next week, we should at least get some. Well, I think we'll get at least an idea of how they might respond to this as well. All right, great. Thank you all. All right, Subcommittee Updates, Charter Performance, Vice Chair Gibson.
Oh, you did, sorry. I mean, we're still, didn't we have a date for EpiCenter? Our next, our next work session. So we spent most of our time talking about EpiCenter once again. And how EpiCenter can best serve us. And both Becca and I had said, you know, when we had the first presentation, it was like, oh, we can do all this. And then a lot of that hasn't happened. Some of it takes longer than other things, and I understand that. But it just seems that it can be serving schools better than it is right now. And one of the things we are, and we have asked for, is to see if there's a way that our schools can do as many as possible submissions that have to go to P E D bureaus, if they can do that through EpiCenter and not have to do all the separate reportings, that that would make it, I think it would help the schools out a lot. So we asked Bridgette to have that conversation with Mary. Mary was, EpiCenter is going to be at our next work session because Mary was there. And we expressed all of our wants for what we thought EpiCenter should be able to do. And we also felt that it might be a good idea to have a refresher for commissioners on how EpiCenter is working now so that you can access it better. You know, I think for me, I use it more for contacts than anything else. So, and I will say, I was reminded, if you go in now, I know a couple of times I've gone in and I've known that, like, the head, that the G C person left and they're still on there to let Missy know that it hasn't been updated. Because schools should be updating that so that you know. And a couple of times I get back emails because that person's not on the board any longer and it hasn't been updated there. So they are going to be at our next work session to do that refresher. Plus, an update on where they are with looking at how they can better, best serve schools with this. And we're also looking at, once again, that public facing dashboard. So that when parents and any community member, you know, and we talked to Mary about this. If I'm talking to a legislator about schools in my district or charter schools as a whole, should be able to open up EpiCenter and say, look, here's this school, here's that school. This is where our schools are sitting with, serving students with disabilities. And that should be the easy access for us to have that conversation. And there's the data right there, instead of going into VISTAS, which doesn't give you anywhere near the information that we have on our schools. So that, working to build out that public dashboard. And of course, for parents, when they're trying to make a good choice for their families, to be able to go onto that public facing dashboard and say, what school should I be looking at to send my kids? So they'll be here for the work session in October.
Would this be, so the report of the charter schools that we're supposed to be putting together every year? It would seem this would be, we could tailor some of that public facing deal to become that report really, without having to go through a great deal of editing and blah, blah, blah. You know, just, we could, we could have something that we could almost just pull up at a minute and say, here you go. And have them be, I think that would be a really positive thing, to be able to take to legislators and everything else, to, when we go to them and say, well, you know, when you're talking about doing this, this is, this is what your dollars are supporting right here.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, and this is probably a really dumb question, so pardon me for my ignorance. Because this reminds me of another age-old issue, which is having, being able to just have one place to provide reports and not have all these multiple expectations and different dates and different formats. And EpiCenter, is that a P E C sole ownership deal? Or is that part of the bigger P E D? So it's just a P E C?
It's P E C funded.
Funded.
2%, the contract, because we're administr. 2%, the contract, because we're administratively attached, contract is with PED.
Okay, but Epicenter is not intended as PED's election for.
Only.
We want to try and make that happen and then have an interface with PED from Epicenter that then populates all the reports that everybody wants?
Well, the the conversation, so with the additional items that we're talking about, so right now Epicenter is set up to collect CSD requirements, right? Like, anything that CSD would normally be like, send to charter schools, you know, email or put it in the Google Drive. Ideally, all those things go to into Epicenter. That's how it's currently functioning. What we're proposing, and I did have a conversation with Deputy Secretary DeBelle about it and she because she's leading the coherence project across the PED, trying to minimize submissions, trying to make things more streamlined. And so she was actually open to talking through what it could look like and supporting the idea that, I believe, and I I know Greg in CSD has been collecting all the submissions that our state charters have to make all across the PED, right? And I believe there's like 67 of them, 69, like, there's quite a few submissions, right? There's a couple that are in secure portals that they just have to, yeah, can't touch those. However, there's probably over 60 submissions that are going to different bureaus at different times in the year. They've been collecting that information to figure out what that looks like. The proposition that I had with W. Secretary DeBelle is, can we work together so that charter schools, we can put all those submissions into Epicenter for our state charters? And that way, they don't have to go look at, okay, for language and culture, I need to go to this Google Drive or email this email or go to this person, that they submit them all into there. And then, working with Epicenter and with the PED divisions to allow a language, I'm using language and culture as an example, but it's all across the board, right? So they would submit all of their language and culture requirements to Epicenter. And then we would work with Epicenter to allow a person from language and culture to access that. So that they, once again, the charter schools, they put it all in one space, but then it allows all the divisions to separately access it without any, like, so for the charter schools, it looks very clear. And and Secretary DeBelle did say she would be interested in helping support that, what that looks like, because it does correlate a lot with the coherence project that she's leading in minimizing burden. So I think there's an opportunity to work with her in order to do that.
I had the ridiculous notion, when I talked to Bridget about this, wouldn't it be great if information that has to be repeated, 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 every time you do this report, that report couldn't, you know, if Epicenter could have that, that's probably not going to be able to happen because I was meeting with charter leaders and they said, you know, I, you know, we have this report and it's like, oh, God, I'm putting in the same stuff. And sometimes, multiple times, you know, in the same report. It's like, now I'm on a new page, so now I have to put in all this information again. But I don't know if you want to speak to the coherence project.
So the coherence project is paused at the moment at PED at large. They did not have funding during the current fiscal year to continue working with the contractor. But just this week, I was able to get access to all of the raw data, all of the documents, all of the reporting from that contractor. And so I'm in the process of updating what we were already collecting on our own. And now I have this additional treasure trove of data. So we're actually, the the first PED division that we're going to sort of pilot the Epicenter route with is educator growth and development. Because schools that have an educator evaluation waiver, their data isn't collected automatically through Canvas. And so they have to submit it to Ed Quality. And so I asked Birgit, the director, can they just put it in Epicenter and I'll get you a login? And she said, sure. So that's, that's going to be our first pilot.
Right.
So it's only for those schools that have a teacher evaluation waiver in place, but we'll see how it works. I do anticipate, I do anticipate objections from within PED from Priority Schools Bureau and maybe, you know, because the DASH plan, I mean, the DASH website has, there's these modules, it's all set up, they probably export data from it. So, you know, if if that was, if 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 school improvement plans that are now submitted through DASH were submitted through Epicenter, they would have to be done, you know, as a Word document or a PDF, whereas it's all very modular in DASH and you go in here and and enter that and go in there and enter that. And so I I haven't yet been able to have that conversation with their director.
Yeah, but even if we can do the vast majority, that's, you know, and then there's a couple of outliers. You know, I mean, we know that the safety plan is in that, you know, secure portal. So and I totally get that, so that's fine. But I think if we could take the vast majority, that's going to make it. And it also, you know, to me, it also eliminates the, because we know that some of them have been difficult. We've had bureaus come to us and say, oh, they didn't report it. And then the school comes back and says, I've been trying to and I just, you know, keeps bouncing back, I can't get it. So I think it would also help that way, that it's it's there and there's no question about someone, you know, wasn't able to submit it.
The other thing I like in addition to that is when it's in Epicenter, they get due dates, they get reminders. There's nobody, like, there's not a human that's having to take precious time to go remind schools, right? They get the reminder, they get the the alert, you know, they get, they know when it's when it's late. It's like, it's all there to where it's it's creates ideally more clarity for the schools too, right? And if they're missing something, they're going to get that reminder from Epicenter. And it doesn't have to be a poor CSD person making a phone call or that division, right? Like, the school, it it's clear to the school and it automates a lot of that stuff that is not really automatic elsewhere.
Okay, I think it's done.
All right, cool. Uh, Budget.
We did not meet.
That's correct. But we will soon.
Yes.
Because I, just to give a quick update, yep, quick update is this, the special project was launched and we did start getting applicants already, so Budget Subcommittee.
So if we want to meet earlier than scheduled, I'll send out a thing.
Perfect. Policy, I think the MOU covered it. Legislative were done, Board Awards did not meet.
There's a question, if we're going to have.
Oh.
Ooh, yeah, so if we're going to have a conference this coming spring or summer.
We could do it at the regional meetings.
Regional meetings.
We should still have.
Think so.
Yeah.
And actually, that may change the timeline because if we're planning on doing those regional meetings in February, we may need to start preparing for Board Awards much.
Yesterday.
Yeah. But let's, let's talk, let's talk about that.
All right.
Okay.
Wait a minute, so we said, let's talk about that, so.
Today, like, in a Subcommittee meeting, set up a Subcommittee meeting.
I guess that means we need to meet.
Yes, we need to meet.
Who's on my, this, meet you?
Not me.
And Sam.
Yeah, okay. And who's our person, was Missy? You're always our person, okay. Okay, we'll get something scheduled.
All right, indicators of success, we did meet, we worked with Missy and Bridget to get the indicators of success pilot program launch. Once again, this is something the Commission has voted on a couple of different times. So we are planning on, still, we want to launch the pilot project, which is an opt-in option for governing boards. So they can fill out the survey, the survey is still the exact same survey that you saw over the last, like, two years now, I think. Same exact survey, same indicators, that'll go out to boards. We're hoping, we're, we're, our goal from the Subcommittee is to send it out to governing boards October 1st. So they'll get the information about the program, what it is, what it looks like. And they'll be able to apply for the $10,000 grant if they opt in. So they can opt in two different ways. They don't have to do it at all this fiscal year, number one. But as a pilot program, they can get the survey, they can do the survey, submit it. Once again, this is not, P E C will never see these survey results. We won't have access to looking at how individual boards are are rating themselves, that's really for CSD. So they can do the survey and stop there. And if they want to opt in that way this year and they feel like, okay, yeah, this, we'll, we'll start taking a look at it and they want to do that, great. They can also go a step further and pick any indicator that they rated themselves low on and come up with a plan to support themselves increasing that rating over the course of this fiscal year. And they can apply for up to $10,000 to get support in order to do that. The program will look very, not very, exactly the same as the Performance Framework Program right now, where it goes through, right now, the Performance Framework Program goes through the Budget Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee approves it, and then CSD helps with the funding process. This one, because we will not be seeing those results from the schools, they will be submitting all of it through CSD. And CSD will be doing the approvals for this program. And so we gave the guidance, once again, that as long as the schools have a plan and they have a goal that's actually measurable, that they can show that this is what we anticipate using this funds for and how it will help us improve, that we expect CSD to go ahead and approve those plans. So, yeah, October 1st is our goal. When that gets sent out, we'll ask the CSD, make sure it's to B C C, all the commissioners, just so you can also see what's out there. And you can help support governing boards by telling them they have $10,000 available to them this year to support their operations or their their assessment of themselves. During this year, we'll, we anticipate modify, like, you know, making adjustments where we need to, allowing the pilot program to flow, see what works, what doesn't. And then we will be proposing a policy early spring that would go into effect July 1 that would then make this program a requirement, not an option, but only to complete the survey. So that's the only requirement we're going to ask governing boards do in the future, is that they complete the survey, submit it to CSD. The grant program is optional. Hopefully, every governing board takes advantage of it and at least asks for a couple thousand of their own 2% back to them to help support themselves, but we're not requiring that a governing board apply for the funding unless they opt into it as well. But the survey is going to be a requirement starting July 1 is our anticipation.
So, freshman, the survey that you're referring to is a self-assessment of just the governing board? The operational, does it seep into operation?
Yeah, it's, it's basically, so the program really started from WestEd Research and there's 47 indicators that show a school's success. And so we're asking governing boards to take a look at it from their perspective, independently of the head administrator, and rate themselves on those 47 indicators. We do anticipate that some of these indicators, governing boards may not have thought of like, oh, I didn't even know I needed to, we didn't know. So that's why we also want to keep the P E C out of the results because we want them to be like, yeah, we're at 2 on the, or 1, we didn't even know we were supposed to do that, that's none of our business. But we want to support them improving, like, the awareness of like, yeah, you are supposed to do that and here's a way to help you improve as well.
It is over and above, so they can apply for both grants.
Yes, yes, yep, yep. So the kind of way we've been talking about is, is kind of like the Performance Framework Grant is kind of for the head administrators and the day-to-day kind of stuff of like what they're doing and operate, like, to for the Performance Framework indicators. This one is very governing board specific. So how the governing board would use that fund to support themselves independently of the head administrator. So it is, it's definitely different than why, you know, what governing boards have had from us before. So it's definitely shifting that over to like, governing boards need support too and they deserve it. All right, and then strategic plan, there's, right now, we're in the phase where the PCSNM has has connected with the National Charter School Institute. They're ready to go ahead and start the funding process to get it going. There's a scope of work that was created, sent to the Strategic Plan Subcommittee. I would like to send that to National Charter School Institute and PCSNM today. So if there's any other scope of work issues, respond to that, we'll get that over to them. And I still, my, my ask from both of them is still going to be that they're here in October to get us started. You know, that we're really like getting that first initial, like, this is what the Commission wants, this is what the Commission needs, this is what it looks like, go ahead and get going, ideally would be October. And then we're, we're also really going to push to make sure all of it's done before July 1 of this fiscal year. So hopefully, getting us started in October gets us to a draft by January to where when we do those February regional meetings, we're actually going through the strategic plan with those governing boards as well. All right. Reports from P E C liaisons, Vischer Gibson, L F C.
I was unable to go. My dermatologist had other events for me.
Great, L F C did meet in August. The only item that they reviewed that would apply to us is they did look at the Universal Healthy School Lunch Program. PED did provide a report. It's actually in, on the L F C website, if you want to read through the whole report, if you're really interested in the school lunch program and how it's not fully funding schools. That is what was reported from from PED and through the L F C presentation. So it is very real that the Universal Healthy School Lunch Program that the state is doing and the feds are creating a lot of complications for schools. And they are being underfunded in, across the board, not just charter schools. This is a, this is a whole statewide issue. And L F C's recommendation is that PED can continue to monitor it so that they can see exactly where the issues are, really trying to pinpoint what's, what's going well, what's not going well, so that they can make adjustments in the future.
Okay, so new meals have been cut back yet, nothing like that, yet?
What do you mean?
Well, you have, if you're funding a school lunch program, if you don't have money, then maybe you don't have lunches. I want to make sure that everyone's still being fed.
Oh, yeah, I don't know if that's, so school, they didn't really go into, like, individual schools and how.
Well, I guess the bigger question is, we are going to see a loss of funding on a lot of different levels, but this, I believe that in Mexico, we have money. So let's not kid ourselves that we don't have money. So we should, the state needs to pick up where we don't have any, and so.
That's what L F.
Okay, but the thing is, my question, like I've said earlier, is like, what are they doing next? So there's six months, a year from now, they don't find themselves, oh, my God, we've run out of money. No, you know, have a little foresight here because we know this is coming.
I love this because that's, that's actually exactly what they're doing.
Good.
That's exactly what they're doing. I think they're hearing from schools that they're being underfunded. So basically, the L F C was like, what do you, what do you know now, PED? PED was like, this is what we know exactly now. And then they, their recommend, their biggest thing was, we need you all to really tell us as the, as the year progresses. They need PED to come back to them to be like, this is exactly how much is being underfunded by the state. Like, this is what, how much the feds are giving, this is how much the state program's giving, and this is how much the schools are paying out of their general fund in in those different levels. So that, that's actually exactly what they're doing. But they're, they're in the midst of it. They, I don't, I, it didn't feel like to me, reading through the port, report and listening to that section, that there's a solution today, but it's like they're monitoring, they're trying to figure out exactly what the problem is, exactly what the numbers are and what they need to do in order to improve it. Yeah, you're exactly right. And then this upcoming, they're about to meet next week. I won't be going and there's no pub, like, K-12 public school issues on the agenda, so I won't have a report next month. Commissioner Klausha Shilich.
We did not meet, we have, we didn't meet, Quam.
Commissioner Ingam.
Well, the P S T O C met and there's several issues going on that are pretty dramatic for them. There, we had to go into executive session for a little bit, there's a lawsuit out there. There is the director, so they did name Larry Tillitson as the interim director, which needed to happen. And Iris is officially no longer employed by the council. And the, they're searching, Larry is not, he did not put his hat in as far as the eventual director. So that, so there's a lot going on, not so much with the charter school world, but they are very much aware of the issues that are coming up. So I want to thank you for your letter. I think that they, that will be great for especially those chairs to understand what I've been whining about. I think that they, that will be great for especially those chairs to understand what I've been whining about. And then I, I guess I want to say, I also met or went to the task force, which is the Public School Capital Outlay Oversight Task Force. Big name. I, I, I think it was very profitable for me to be there. Matt Paul and Michael Goss presented there about exactly the problem we're having. And so of course, that has a bunch of legislators, one, one in particular that is, is just really antagonistic. Her name is Laura, no, Kara.
Yeah, just.
Anyway. She's especially antagonistic. And I'm going to say that our other friend with the Board Association was not very helpful either. But it was well received and I think that it was a good thing. So, I mean, we're just including that with my PSCOC fun functions, right? And so I, I think that we are, that's one of my other feelings is that we're very well suited. This, this is a great time. LFC both had a specific focus last time on charter schools. The, the, it's really a, a hot topic for them and I, I would hate to see that get, fall off the agenda. So we're going to try to keep that forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Manus, are you online?
He is, but he turned off his camera, so it looks like he might have stepped away.
Okay. Commissioner Creo, any update?
Uh, nothing to report.
Oops. Nothing to report, but as we get something together on transportation, I mean, it's up to them whether or not they want to support it. But I'll reach out to Joe and see what we can do.
Okay. All right.
There's the whole library, Michael.
Yeah. Like I'm done, I don't have to do this. Okay. There's been no conferences, so we'll go ahead and take a, let's go ahead and take a. I think we start at 11:15. Let's take a little break. Is that okay? 11:15? I don't think the meeting agenda will be particularly long, so. And if anybody wants to stop for lunch, you're going to have to tell me because my plan is to move through. I think we'll be done. Okay. Great.